I want to call this city council order along with the other agencies. And I welcome everybody here, and I know that we have some, I won't say new faces, but some nice new old faces here. So, welcome back to the city council in this interesting time of ours. We will begin with the invocation and the pledge allegiance, and I'll let the city clerk announce those two individuals.
Night's invocation will be given by Pastor Joe McTarsney of Calvemarie Montclair, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Lopez.
Please stand.
... who are faithful to hear and receive our prayers. Lord, we lift up our great city of Montclair before you, Lord, and all the leadership, and we do pray for our leaders that you give them, your wisdom, and not only your wisdom, but your heart for the people. We thank you for our first responders, be with them this evening, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in pledging allegiance to our great flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the equality for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with clarity and justice.
Please have a roll call.
Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Temru?
Present.
Okay.
Present. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items not on the agenda or request to speak on a consent calendar or business item. The public has a maximum five minutes to address the city council under public comment or on one or more of the consent calendar business items. If you're on Zoom, please hit the raise hand function, and if you're on the phone, please dial nine to request to speak under the public comment or consent calendar business item. If you are in the audience, I ask that please complete a speaking card for a public comment or consent calendar business item. As you may know, the Brown Act of City Council is privy to discussing any item that's not on the agenda. So, I'm going to ask the city clerk at this time if she's got any speakers or any person who requires to speak under a consent calendar.
I have a request from Mr. Kulp to speak on items C1 and C6, and he also has his hand raised on Zoom, so I'll go ahead and allow him to speak.
Hello, Bruce. Are you there?
Good evening.
Yeah, go ahead. Five minutes, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, I was at the workshop here earlier, and I just wanted to thank the two members there that are sitting today for their presentation as a resident. It's good to know that we have good representation at the federal level for our great city of Montclair. Looks like we've got some heavy lifting to do for our gold line extension here. I don't know if that's ever going to come from the federal level or if it's going to end up at the state level or what, but it's good to know we have somebody in our corners at the federal level. So, thank them both, and as mentioned, I would like to speak on items C1 and C6 later.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have no other public speakers, so we'll move on with the agenda. And the next item is consent calendar. And I know, again, there was a request to speak under C1 and C6 by the public, and I asked my, took a look to my left, any items you wish to...
No, thank you.
I was thinking about pulling with C1.
C1, okay. How about my right?
I just was going to make a motion. Mr. Kulp wanted C1 and C6.
Yeah, we'll have the public comment first before we do a motion.
And I was going to make a motion for the consent calendar as presented.
Okay, so...
I also wanted C1 and C6 pulled.
C1 and C6, so let's do this. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, staff would like to pull item C1 and continue it to a future meeting. There are some items of negotiation that I need to address with Greyhound, so with the council's cooperation on that item, I would like to just pull that and continue it to a future meeting.
Okay, let's do this.
Point of order. If the item is continued, C1 and C6 are related because...
Well, go ahead.
Because the $25,000 allocation from Greyhound is dependent on C1. So, I would like to see if C1 is going to be continued, I'd like C6 to be continued as well.
And that may require the city attorney to address, but in my opinion, the $25,000 allocation is not dead simply because I'm pulling item C1. It will stay in the agreement, it'll come back, and I don't think there's a requirement that that particular agreement be adopted at this point in time. If the council chooses not to approve the agreement with Greyhound in the future, then staff would come back with an amendment to the item related to the restroom to reallocate the $25,000 from the lease revenue bond funds.
Okay. So, what we'll do is we'll take the public comment on the item C1, C6 from Bruce, and then we'll bring it back to the council, see if council's got any questions about item C1, and then we'll go from there. So, let's get the public comment first. Bruce, you there?
I'm here.
Okay, you have five minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll make it quick, especially since this item's going to be continued. Just, you know, my only thought was on the Greyhound, which I thought was an excellent idea, and I'm really excited about seeing additional services there. Just the location of that kiosk, I know if we ever get the gold line, which I'm confident that we'll do at some point in the future, it looks like the kiosk will be placed probably somewhere where there'll be construction for that gold line. So, that was my only concern about that particular item was just the location. I know it's going to be a shared bus station, but I was wondering if we could move the kiosk out of the way of where construction might take place for the gold line. Of course, nobody, I'm not exactly sure where that's going to happen, but anyways, on item C, should I go ahead and speak on C6?
Yeah.
Okay, C6, again, I frequent the Montclair Transit Center quite a bit. There is a porta potty there, and I don't think it's ever been used, I probably wouldn't use it, but there's many times that I'm there, and there's a need for restrooms. Obviously, there are people there that need to use the restroom, public, from the public from time to time, and so I'm really glad to see that we're going to put something there that is a little bit more permanent. I agree that we need to utilize the best possible public restroom facility we can. I think they're proposing a platinum service, which has a cleaning, self-pinning option. That would be most preferable. My concern is, is obviously, you know, just trying to keep the place from being vandalized, and I think that this platinum level provides the best level to reduce the amount of vandalism that can take place. Obviously, we have a homeless population in that area that do need to use the restroom, and I highly encourage them to use that when it's necessary, as their options are extremely limited. But vandalism is something that shouldn't take place, and, you know, I'm just worried about the security available to make sure that the vandalism is kept to a minimum. Otherwise, I'm fully in support of a public restroom at the MetroLink Transit Center. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. All right, so going back to item C1, I did have communication with the city manager. I had some questions, and I understand there'll be 12 stops a day. I believe during the weekday only, if I'm correct. If there are any changes or any additions to the stops, then that would require Omnitrans, no, Omnitrans, Greyhound to come back and have to request additional stops with approval of both Omnitrans and the city of Montclair. They're actually sharing a, one of the Omnitrans bus benches there. And the reason for the continuation is, one of my questions was that if they're paying, we're charging them $1,800 and they want to increase their fee in the future, you know, do they pay $1,800? So, that's one of the things that we'll negotiate with Greyhound. As far as item C6, I just want to state that I've gone on a video, I've looked at item C6. It's, I've done some research, pretty impressive system. It has an opportunity to clean itself, it does say how long you can be inside the restroom facility. Once you exceed that time limit, which could be 10 minutes, the door automatically opens up and doesn't close. We also have the opportunity to electronically close it after, you know, you want to close it after 8:00 PM and not open it before 8:00 AM, you have the opportunity to do that electronically. So, I think those issues were concerned, were ratified for me regarding item C6. So, I know there's some questions on these two items, and I'll start with my left, I believe the councilmember Johnson. Go ahead.
Yeah, I did have some comments and some questions, but since the item is continued, I will hold my comments until then.
Is the comments of any irrelevance to the negotiations that the city manager will take place? Okay. Okay, go ahead, Ben.
A few items. Colleagues, the, even within the title of item number six, second paragraph, consider authorizing appropriations in the amounts of $270,000 from 2021 lease revenue bond funds and $25,000 from Greyhound lease agreement number 21-66, et cetera. I'm uncomfortable with, drawing a blank now, I'm uncomfortable with moving forward or postponing item C1 and then taking action tonight on item C6. The two are hand in hand, in my opinion. If it, if there are changes that can be made at a later date because of negotiations or contractual changes, there is no harm also in postponing and waiting for C6 at the same time we adopt C1, if it is adopted. That's my first point, and I would request that we...
Let's ask, that's question to staff. Ed, is there a need to do C6 now, or can this wait a little longer?
No, there is a need to do C6 now. I do think it is independent. I do understand the connection to the $25,000, but that is a reimbursable amount. The city would be expending the money for the purchase of the restroom as well as for the construction work related to its installation, and then we would be reimbursed through the Greyhound contract after the work is all completed. So, approving the contract with Greyhound later will not in any way inhibit the city's ability to move forward, but more importantly, we need to get the contractors on board to start working at the transit center to get the sewer line, the water lines, and the electrical lines in place so that that will be ready to receive the restroom when it is available for installation. And we would like to do this in a relatively short time, hopefully before the end of this year, if we possibly can. The existing porta potty restrooms that are there now, just as has been indicated by Mr. Kulp, they're simply not functional. They're constantly abused, they get tipped over, and oftentimes, people just refuse to even use them. So, I think it's to our interest, particularly since part of the agreement with Greyhound is that the city would make certain that this restroom would be installed, again, not only for Greyhound, but certainly for the public at large that uses the facilities separate from Greyhound. So, for us, it is imperative that we move forward with item number six at this time.
You're saying, Ed, there's, before we order the unit, there's pre-planning, pre-workings be done, utility work can be done to the site from a subcontractor or a contractor to do the work.
Yes, yes, that is correct.
All right, go ahead. I'm sorry.
But, Mr. Mayor, having said that, that's all predicated under the assumption that C1 is going to be adopted. So, unless you've counted votes already and know who's going to vote for this thing, that's a bit presumptuous to assume that we can proceed on a bathroom that we're going to get $25,000 from Greyhound, and we haven't even adopted the original agreement. So, that's why I would say the two are related, and they should both be postponed. I'm uncomfortable with both, even more so now, given what has been stated tonight. I think item C6 can wait.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add, the restroom really is a separate issue from Greyhound. We had asked for a direction from the city council earlier in this year to move forward with the acquisition of a restroom at the transit center, indicating the problems with the existing restroom facilities. The fact that there is a donation from Greyhound came after the fact. That came through negotiations between myself and Greyhound when I simply asked if they would be willing to make a donation. So, while it is linked in the agreement between the city and Greyhound, it was never the city's intent to not purchase the restroom without Greyhound's participation. That was always an independent decision that the city was going to act on.
Mr. Mayor, my final point is something that you brought up that I did not know of. There's a time limit on the door for the bathroom, so after a 10-minute timeframe, an individual is in there, the door opens, you said?
Yeah, it automatically opens.
Okay, I have a serious problem with that for individuals that are handicapped, for those that have digestive problems, will need a little bit more time than 10 minutes to use the restroom.
Well, I assume there's an override of 10 minutes, need a little more time, there's someone that can push, but the idea is to avoid someone who's permanently using that unit. The purpose of that, obviously, is to use the restroom facility to wash your hands. Obviously, we have folks who are ADA, need a little more time, we're going to accommodate a little more time, but we're trying to avoid someone who wants to use it for the next eight hours, and that's what we're trying to avoid. That's the purpose behind that. So, perhaps staff's got a better, how the system works a little better, but...
Will there be a staff member, not ours, staff member on duty at this potential bathroom that can monitor traffic flow and potentially look at questionable individuals that may be abusing the facility and not really using it, instead of a door that, for all intents and purposes, pops open when the time limit is exceeded?
The city has security there that is on duty during the entire time that the transit center is operational. In addition to that, during each weekday, the city has a maintenance worker that is on site doing general cleanup of the property. We do not have an attendant that will be monitoring the restroom. The restroom itself is designed to be self-monitoring. As the mayor indicated, it provides a 10-minute permission to use the restroom. It provides a notice before the restroom door will open, that there is a countdown occurring that will give the individual an opportunity to finish their business. In the case of a handicap individual, they can reset the time limit, but they have to manually do that. That is not something that is automatically done for them. So, they will have to finish their business, reset it, and then continue to use the restroom for an additional 10 minutes. The restroom itself, after each usage, cleans the commode, not the entire restroom. The entire restroom is not cleaned until the end of the day, when the restroom facility shuts down for the night. In addition to that, staff has the ability to monitor the restroom through a software program so that if we detect that there are issues, for example, people need more than 10 minutes, we can adjust the time. In fact, the 10-minute time is adjustable by us at any time. If it's determined that 20 minutes is more appropriate, then we can set that time limit to 20 minutes. But it does have to be a standard time, whatever we set. It can't be fluctuating based on individual needs. So, we will have to simply evaluate it through the use of an application that allows us to monitor its use and how people interact with the restroom, and then determine the appropriate time limits that we would set after that.
Well, I just want to go on record that I'm uneasy with that time limit, even with the ramifications put in place to give people more time, a manual timer. I do think that individuals that are either handicapped and need a little bit more mobility to move around, and those with some serious intestinal, digestive issues may need some more time, and I think a time limit on a door or the use of the facility is not as accommodating to them. So, I will wait for some motions to be made.
Well, Ed, any comments about item C1?
Well, if it's going to be postponed, I would be in favor of, what's the word besides postpone? I'm losing it.
Continue.
Thank you. That's, yes, now that it's going to be continued, I am comfortable with it being continued.
Okay. So, regarding to item C6, I'm comfortable with item C6. One reason I'm comfortable with item C6, because we have need a decent restroom at that site for many, many years. Those porta potties, I walked in there several times, they're disgusting, so we need this. I'm not too concerned about the $25,000. I feel, you know, if Greyhound backs off the deal, the city will find $25,000 elsewhere to make this project happen. I'm assuming the vendor is going to be coaching us on the amount of time, their experience with their other clients, and they'll give us an idea, 10 minutes is reasonable, 15 minutes, how do we deal with folks who are in wheelchairs or who are ADA, that need more time? I'm assuming that the vendor's going to work in this area.
Yes, absolutely.
Could you get that vendor in touch with me, please?
I can try.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Just have some more questions.
I would suggest, Ben, if you want to, send your questions to staff, either put them writing or email, and have them give them to the vendor, and then get back to you. Start there.
I'd rather deal with the vendor directly. My questions would be more appropriate for them.
Okay, I understand that, but I think, you know...
Maybe have them come and do a presentation here.
Well, the vendor's in Australia, so they're not going to be doing that.
Well, I think staff understands the concerns that was raised by Councilmember Lopez. So, I think if staff can try to address those issues, and then if there is a representative can speak, and Councilmember Lopez can be part of that phone conversation, and he can answer some more questions, I think that's appropriate. So, so let's do this, Ben. In regards to the consent calendar, we're going to continue item C1, and then is there a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar items?
I'll make a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar. The few questions I had on C6, I can ask of staff.
Okay.
A second.
Motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, go ahead.
I would like the item C6 to be pulled individually, please.
Okay, any, is there any consensus to pull item C6, or you wish item C6 to remain? I don't hear anything, so we will keep item C6 on the consent calendar. You have an objection to item C6, Ben?
I do.
You want to voice an objection to item C6?
I'd like to record.
Okay, so as part of the electronic vote, Councilmember Lopez will be voting no on item C6. All right, so let's have electronic vote.
Mr. Mayor, if I may make one comment on C6. Whether or not Greyhound is there becomes irrelevant in the fact that we have MetroLink, Omnitrans, Foothill Transit, Riverside Transit currently at the site. I take MetroLink for different things, and let me tell you, it is, I would never use one of those porta potties. You have people who may be returning home from work who need to use a restroom facility. They've taken MetroLink, and they're not going to wait to get in their car to find a restaurant or some other place they can go. The same would be for those who ride the bus. Once the gold line comes through, we're going to find we need this. So, I'm just looking at, in that sense, to me, it's irrelevant what Greyhound thinks, it's what we're going to need in the future at a multimodal transit center.
Thank you. Let's have electronic vote.
On the remaining items, Mr. Mayor?
On the whole thing, and noting that you'll be voting no on item C6. So, the motion with exception of item C6 is approved unanimously, and item C6 is adopted 4 to 1 with Councilmember Lopez voting no. Okay, consent calendar, I'm sorry, we have a council workshop. So, the council workshop on November 10 is regarding to continue the discussion on the infrastructure projects, as we had that first discussion at the last city council, not last city council, but the last workshop two weeks ago. So, my question, my council colleagues, is, again, Wednesday, November 10 at 6:00 PM, is that work for everyone?
It may be problematic for me, because I've just found out I need to be out of town at a conference, but I might be able to do it via Zoom or teleconference.
Okay.
If I can do it by Zoom or teleconference, I should be okay.
All right. Everybody else, sounds like that day works for them, with exception of Councilmember Rue. What would you know, Councilmember Rue, that you may be able to do by Zoom?
I should know by tomorrow.
Oh, okay. And if that is problematic for you, that you prefer we just find another date?
If you could find another date, but I'm fairly confident I can do it by Zoom.
All right, let's do this, then.
I'll let you and the city manager know.
If you're good on November the 10th, that we'll have it. If it doesn't work that day, then we'll have to find a new date, and I'll ask the city clerk to contact all the council members to find that suitable date.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would feel more comfortable if all five of us were here in person, given the importance of the measure before us.
Well, Councilmember...
Lopez?
Councilmember Rue, Mayor Pro Temru, are you, you want to be present for the meeting, or are you okay to be on Zoom?
I'm okay to be on Zoom, but if the comfort level of the council is, I'm just like, this is an important item, I don't want to have to delay it, because after that, we're getting into Thanksgiving week.
Okay, yeah.
We have a week...
The rest of the council have any comments on that?
I'm fine with it being on November 10. I'm also fine with Mayor Pro Temru being on Zoom, because we, that's an option that is available to us now, so I'm fine with it.
Okay, Carissa, you have a...
I'm fine with that, with November 10.
As long as Councilmember Rue is available?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, so unless there's any objections, and it's so noted, that we'll have the council workshop on November 10, subject to the availability of Mayor Pro Temru. City manager, any communication?
I have no items this evening.
Okay. I just want to say two things real quick. The Special Olympics were held today by PD, Montclair PD, Moncler Police Department, and I appreciate that occurring. And then, of course, last Saturday, we had the Halloween event, and great turnout, but kudos to staff for a great job in that. And then finally, I actually want to congratulate Councilmember Martinez on her marriage yesterday, marriage ceremony. And I'll start with Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I hope everyone had a fantastic Halloween weekend. I did, and I'm sad that I missed the Montclair event, but I, you know, last minute planning for the wedding. But I noticed that things are getting a little bit back to normal in the city, and kids are getting out, and hopefully still wearing their masks to some extent, if they can, when they're outside, but looking forward to the holidays around the corner now.
Councilmember Johnson?
I just have one quick comment. I'm happy to report that we have yet another new business here in Montclair. It is called Hasko. There are flyers on the podium over there, if anybody wants a flyer. It is an outlet store for Costco, and it's opening at the former Harley-Davidson site. The grand opening and ribbon cutting is on this coming Thursday, the 4th, and the Habit Truck will be there handing out free burgers and assorted stuff. So, if you got to eat lunch on Thursday anyway, you might as well come over there and have lunch. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Little League Spooktacular event. I think there were some overlaying titles with these three holiday events that were in a row. On the 29th, the Little League had their Halloween event at Saratoga Park. It was well-attended. Thank you to Tiffany Ramos and her board for coordinating that and putting that on for the families. October 30th, of course, Saturday, we had our city event, our Halloween Spooktacular. That's the title for that one. Thank you, Marcia, for your department's efforts in coordinating that event. That was very widely attended. It was a huge crowd. I'm glad to see that the crowd came even from outside cities. Kudos to staff member Caleb Taylor and Daryl Hickey, if you haven't noticed them at these events. These two people, in my opinion, are great with working with the crowd, making those in attendance feel at home, feel welcome. Daryl's great on the mic. I think he may have been a DJ in a past life, but he was excellent. And Caleb dancing, doing the, some type of electric slide with the kids really made them feel at home and welcome. So, kudos to them. Give my appreciation to them. CAC, the Community Activities Commission, thank you as well, and again, Marcia, to your staff. October 31st, yesterday, was Halloween, and Bethany Baptist, Pastor Josh Matlock, and his church put on a good event. They had 25 trunks full of candy, food trucks, and Jacob's ladder. They had the playground open. I would easily say about 500 to 600 people were there when I got there about 7:00, and it went on just a little bit past 8:00, so that was great. Today, this afternoon, as the mayor had mentioned, the Montclair PD took part in the Special Olympics torch relay. They, the Chino PD passed the torch on to Montclair PD at Montavista and Phillips. They ran it in up through the city. They made their way here to City Hall at a stop, and they made their way down to Central, then to Mission, to Benson, and they handed it off to Ontario PD. So, thank you to Montclair PD, and all special thanks to Sergeant Manook, Officers Barrera, Officer Sanchez, and Officer Jackso for actually doing the grunt work and the actual running and carrying the torch. Very much appreciated. Thank you for caring about the community and for those in need. It's great to see some longtime residents in the crowd. Roger Lambert, it's good to see you, sir. It's been a while. I know COVID probably put a damper on some things in your guys' ability to come, but I'm glad to see that you're here. Ronnie and Joanie Lindhorst, good to see you as well. Thank you so much. I appreciate you guys, and thank you for caring about the city to show up on a cool night such as this. November 10, County Supervisor Kurt Hagman is putting on a veterans event where veteran services will be offered to veterans, those that have their DD 214 and their ID. Can get services for a variety of needs, whether it be medical benefits of a variety of a, I'm tongue-tied today, of an interesting variety or a wide variety of services. There you go. But anyhow, please reach out to Supervisor Kurt Hagman's office. It'll be held in Chino Hills, and it is a free event for all veterans. So, any Montclair veterans that need assistance of any kind, please take advantage of that. Thank you again, and for those that are watching on Zoom or via phone, we appreciate your attendance. attendance. I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem Rue.
Yes, again, the Halloween event went very, very well. Lot of positive comments on it. I think the community appreciated the fact it was outdoors. I would say to the staff and to the CAC, they did a great, great job. Every staff member who helped really went above and beyond with us. I would also emphasize to everyone, please, please, receive your inoculation, if you're able to receive one. We're not through this yet. We're not out of the woods. It's not nearly over. We're, we don't know what the winter will bring, so if you can receive an inoculation for coronavirus, please, please do so. It's important, if not for you, for somebody you love or you come in contact with. If you can get your booster, booster shot, please do so. It is that important. I will be unable to attend, I couldn't get to the Special Olympics today because of work, and I will be unable to attend on Thursday. I will be at the funeral for the mayor of Duarte, who passed away at the age of 41. Other than that, I look forward to our workshop on the infrastructure, and thank you, everybody, for tuning in.
Well, thank you, and I just want to say, for all those in the audience who are veterans, thank you for your service to our, to our great country. You are truly Americans, and you truly believe in our democratic process, and you truly did sacrifice your time for our country. Thank you. So with that, we're adjourned.